Excellent. So today is Tuesday, January ninth. This is 2024. This is the Unified Elementary School District's monthly meeting. Because of the suddenly disastrous weather outside, we're going to to pare down the agenda a little bit. So what I would like to do is to, first of all, entertain a motion to remove Agenda Items seven, eight, eleven, twelve, and thirteen from the agenda tonight, please. So thanks, Scott. Thank you, Glenn. So first and second, any discussion on that? But I'd like to, I'll propose some some discussion. What I'd like to do, I don't want to hold over any of these items for a full month. So what I'd like to do, to kind of call Keen, if we can schedule just an online-only meeting, a Zoom meeting only in a week or so, to address these items. I don't want to take up time tonight to do it.
And Christelle has joined the meeting, so we certainly can do that.
Thank you, Christelle. I'm not sure if you heard that or not, but we're going to be removing some of the agenda items tonight and holding a Zoom meeting sometime in about a week from now to to take these up. So first and second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion carries. Thanks. So the first agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would invite anyone who wants to to rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, folks, there are no members of the public present in the room, but Director Gordon Dusanyi online. Okay, great. So we can pass that.
You have Jeff. Jeff has joined the meeting, and we may have one member of the public, but yeah.
Okay. Mary Ellen, looks like you're the member of the public we have. Do you have any comments for us?
That's correct, and I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the consent agenda, we have the minutes from our last two meetings. We also have some resignations as well as some nominations. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as published, please. Glenn, second. Thanks, Scott. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Can I include the items that were paid? The warrants? Yeah.
Oh, no, no, the warrants. I'm sorry, the warrants are part of the consent agenda.
Just one question I had. It was a charge for about $550 for t-shirts. Says high school t-shirts. Well, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, no, you know what it was.
I don't.
It's for our new security stack. We did a joint purchase, so it ended up going on the high schools.
Any other questions about the items on the consent agenda? Okay, we have a motion for all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as published. Please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Great. So Director Anderson, you are next on our agenda. Floor is yours.
Hey, friends. How are you? I'll be quick. Know what the weather's like outside, so I wanted to give you an update of the elevator at Bennington Elementary. All the damp roofing is in, the foundations are in, and the excavation is backfilled. Oh, and we've kind of let it be for the winter just because of the things we're experiencing in winter weather in construction. We're going to restart in the spring when weather is more palatable and when the masons are available. So I wanted to show you a couple of renderings. So this is going to be the elevator, and as we talked about many months ago, there's a delineation of different feet and different measurements so that students can stand against it and see how tall they are. It's also is going to be a different brick pattern and colors and layout for the golden ratio so they can learn about the Fibonacci code and a sun dial on the door. The other piece I wanted to show you is that in this year's fiscal budget, we do have, thanks, really, we do have funds to paint the exterior. And so I wanted to update the board. We've been working with Dr. O'Roryo. We have some sample colors on the existing masonry that's painted on the building. And this rendering shows like this is the green. Dr. O'Roryo picked out a number of colors and we put on the wall, and then the architects took these renderings. So we have the cannoli brick portions gray and then the painted sections green. Here's one with blue. And then here's one with yellow. Because we're working on getting, we're getting all, we're working on getting all the schools when we do renovations to be colorful and bright and lively and active. Dr. O'Roryo and the operations team chose bright colors, but we're all open to suggestions. Do you guys have questions, concerns, comments?
I think it looks good. I'm wondering if the color selection is going to be a theme throughout all the elementary schools. Are they all going to be sort of different?
It's all going to be built in specific groups.
How are you going to determine the color of the exterior?
So one, one way is to to kind of look at these renderings and and say, how do you like them compared with like, we have one green, one blue, one yellow. We will do more paint swatches when the weather again gets gets better, and then we'll we'll pick from there.
Is there any action you need from us tonight?
I just wanted to give you an update.
Any, any further questions?
One. The H B, is that where we're standing?
So at Bennington Elementary, we are, we have started insulating over the Christmas break or the holiday break, rather. We started insulating the trunk duct work to stay out of the way of classrooms at Monument Elementary. We've gotten almost all of the insulation complete. The ceiling tiles, if you walk in the building right now, are not there. They're going to be here in the next couple of days to be reinstalled so that most of the HVAC work at Monument will be on the outside of the building moving forward. So that's been our monument. Pownell and Shrewsbury, we did testing, air testing for the amount of cycles that the existing HVAC equipment performs based on ASR standards. So we're waiting for those reports back. I'm missing a bunch, but Woodford, the, all the ductings in, everything is painted, all of the soffits are in. We're just waiting for the head-end equipment that was planned to be installed over the holiday break, but they, unfortunately. So that equipment is here, it's ready to be installed. We just need people to install it. But they're all in progress.
So that brings us out to the finance. The treasurer's report had been posted. That was on there as well. Director Gordon, is there a specific piece of of action that's required?
For the treasurer's?
Yeah, I mean typically not, but it's
to approve it or accept it, but
Not required to accept it, but
Slipped on here. I overlooked it.
Yeah, it's a practice that some boards are doing, but it's not required.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to Agenda Item six, which is the budget discussion. So Director Gordon, the floor is yours.
So what has been posted online and what is in the packet, you don't go through quickly. The first page, budget by category, and with an associated narrative, which is going to be just two through four. Each five of the packet, and again, online PDF, is the same budget, but just broken down by department and or function. And then there's an associated narrative with that, which is four pages long. And then there's a couple other documents that we will get to in a little bit further detail. So I'm not going to jump into that, but we have revenue and then some tax breakdowns. So there have been a number of changes to this draft that you have in front of you tonight. Because we, you know, we didn't have direction from the board to make significant changes, but I can tell you some things that have been since updated since we last met. So on the salary line, there are no changes. On the benefits line, what I did at the SU level and then through the subsequent boards is in working with HR, they were able to pull some usage reports on what our health reimbursement arrangements have been accessed by our basically employees and their families. So every year, depending upon the level of benefits, single folks have nineteen hundred, $2,000, maybe $2,200 on a single plan in an HRA. It's $4,042 for family, for two-person, an employee plus children, anything greater than a single-person plan. So what we've seen over the course of the the last several years since we've been on these high adaptable health plans is that our usage has never exceeded 70%. So, you know, it ebbs and flows every year, but consistently, we've never exceeded that amount. So the first couple of years when we were on these plans, I was budgeting 100%. So we were expensing that. That money has gone into basically a holding account that the, it's at the SU level, but all of our member districts are contributing to it. And our third-party administrator, Health Equity, essentially, based on the claims they receive on a weekly basis, dip into those funds to replenish. So I essentially need to make sure that there's enough funding in there for everybody's healthcare. So as, as the years have progressed, we were budgeting 100 last year. This current year, we budgeted 85%. In this current budget, I've scaled that back to 75. So that has absolutely no impact on what people have access to. It's just the amount that the employer is putting into that set aside. So it's, again, we have plenty of money there. Everybody's benefits are the same. They're negotiated at the state level. So I don't want anybody to read the notes on this, and where it says, you know, we've scaled back the HRA contribution because that absolutely has no impact on what employees allowable amounts are.
One question on that, if I may. The additional or the, if we use 70 and last year was 85, the different, the 15% difference, is that, is that still in that account?
It is.
Okay, so that, so our overpayments have basically given us a little cushion.
Absolutely. And what we've seen is, even though we're we're now into 2024, so these run on a calendar basis, I'm still getting replenishment notices from claims that are being flushed out through 2021. And that's for all districts, so it's a good thing that we have a cushion in there. And sometimes there's money coming back, but oftentimes it's money going out.
And there's, so there may be years when the board may want to put another cushion in there and then understanding that potentially could scale it back.
Yeah. But I feel very comfortable with pulling it back to 75, given that we've never exceeded 70 since we've been on these plans. And the, the rates on the plans were approved by the Department of Financial Regulation last week. So unfortunately, those 16.4 and 16.7% increases are what we are going to see next year. So those are the changes on the the benefit side. There were no changes on the contracted services operations, a couple of changes there. I've gone back through. There were a couple of corrections that I picked up of things that had been carried forward, but then Holly had also gone through and made a couple of adjustments based on funds that we have available through the, our food service program at the SU level. So there were a couple of things that she had built into this budget that we'll be able to use those funds for. So we pulled that out of this draft. Contributing to the reduction you're seeing there. No changes on transportation. I think there was a small adjustment on supplies. And that was, oh, I'm sorry, skipping ahead, tuition, no change on that line either. Supply line, as I was going through, I had noticed that some of the positions that we removed on graph number two, I did have some money associated with those positions, but since they are now being carried in another grant, I removed those from from this draft you have before you. And then I think assessments are the only other change. And the SU budget was approved by the SU Board last night. Pretty significant change from the last draft. It was a $1.7 million increase down to just under eight, I'm sorry, $900,000 there. The major contributing factors to the change in, in the assessments were mainly from student services, special, special education. I did, however, kind of broad brush the entire SU budget and any vacancies that were there or any new positions. I kind of scaled back what I had projected for those, basically, new hires to where they might be placed on a pay scale and pulled back what a potential benefit package looks like to help kind of bring that SU budget down. I also brought down the HRA contributions, 75% at the SU level. And then we also had placeholders in for potential out-of-district placements for students. So we basically took those out with the associated transportation placeholders, knowing that this board has a contingency line that it carries typically every year in its budget. So it could end up having to be tapped into if we do have students that, you know, come up next year and then do end up on an out-of-district placement that we just don't have enough money for in the SU budget to cover it. So it was a way for us to kind of just tighten the belt at the SU level. But knowing that we do kind of have a safety net at that level to be able to cover it if need be. So any questions on the expenditures before I jump into others? So overall, that's bringing us to just over a $30 million expenditure budget, 10.5% increase for 2025 with the current version that you have. So again, all of the, you know, positions that are noted, that have not been crossed out are still in this budget.
On that scenario that you just presented, that was an out-of-district placement that needs to be covered for a year, is that reimb, is that reimbursable?
Yeah.
Why?
If it is a student that is on IEP, if we find that those expenses exceed, the current year's threshold is $66,206. So anything above that, we get reimbursed by the state 95%. The threshold went up slightly for next year. I do have it in here, but it's, I was projecting 70,000 and ended up coming in just a little bit higher than where we are currently. So we will, we definitely track them, and we actually have to report it to the state incrementally through the year. And we take into account any one-on-one pair that they might have, you know, if they're out of district and they have, you know, tuition, of course, any other associated services and transportation, that all gets rolled in to what the cost is to be reimbursed. The thing is, if they're on a 504 and place out of district, there's no reimbursement. That's just straight cost to the district.
So if we are dipping into the, an elementary school district fund and then it gets reimbursed, that fund gets the
I track it all by where the student is. So if the student is an SVU, EST student on the special education side, that reimbursement is coming back into that fund.
This may or may not be a part of this, but I noticed that there are two SUV Nissan-looking things that are over Beet Street. But the transportation hasn't changed at all. So does that mean that they're not part of the SVU, EST?
Or they're carrying in the SVU budget, so those expenses are in the SVU assessment. And essentially, what happened is our contract with due for for out-of-district placements this year substantially higher than what it has been in the past. So it wasn't just a flat rate. It's a flat rate plus mileage. So it was actually almost doubling the cost. So we actually went through a number of scenarios with the Student Services Department to try to come up with ways to save money. And we found this to be a much more beneficial and economical way to transport kids around town and out of district.
Who were the drivers?
They've been hired.
So they get the whole background, road tests, all the other stuff?
Okay, thank you. So we can just to kind of reiterate, so all those positions that don't have straight throughs are still in this budget. So they requested an increase in the music teacher, the increase in the county stadium, all of the six paraprofessionals that are considered local paraprofessionals. The one maintenance position that Holly requested, five campus safety officer positions. Only two of those are vacant. So, you know, we're looking for areas to potentially save. That could be one of them. And then we have the transitioning of a couple of vacancies for our family engagement. So jumping ahead to what would be page 10 in your packet is the revenue. So the highlighted line in the middle of the page, the General State Support Grant. This is the, basically, the demand that we are placing on the education fund. So we, we take our expenditure budget and take off all of the other sources of revenue that we can rely on for next year. So with the tuition line, I'm staying somewhat conservative on this, but we do have budgeted here 21 students coming in. I think we currently have 23. We could bump that up if the board so desires, but right now I have it at 21. We have seen that clearly our interest rates are doing, doing us good at this point in time. They didn't have for the longest time before. I know that they are forecasted to start coming down, so we have gone and increased that revenue line. Fund balance is coming in from prior years, so that is an increase of a couple of the other regular lines that we see from year to year. Forced revenue, we never really know exactly what that number is going to be, so still staying somewhat on the conservative side. Impact revenue, same thing. We never really know. Usually it is, you know, definitely in the 120 range, that number might be a leftover or a pickup the wrong year showing up on that actual line there. And then just the, the panel, there is a panel bond from years ago that was basically refinanced, so they're sending us back money. So that's where that small amount comes from. So essentially, we'd be asking this version of the budget, just over $25 million from the Ed Fund. So what does that mean? On page 11, this is a new version of looking at the tax rate calculation, and this is solely for the SVU, EST. Usually when we look at this at our first pass, we're looking at the blend between our district and Mount Anthony. But because of Act 127, there are a couple of things that are happening that we have to look at the districts individually before we can put them together. So we know prior to FY25, we had a thing called equalized pupils. Going into effect next year is a long-term weighted average daily membership. So the AOE basically took our numbers from FY24, which I have in gray here, and they recalculated them as if Act 127 were in effect now. So you can see we were with equalized pupils, but they've projected if Act 127 was now in effect, our number of students of a long-term weighted ADM would be just over 2,000, giving us an education spending per long-term weighted ADM of 11,693. So with Act 127, what's going to happen for the next five years is that we are going to have to compare our education spending for a long-term weighted ADM to the prior year. Every year, we have to compare. If we're ever over 10% increase, we're going to be subject to a tax rate review. And what that is, is the Secretary of Education is going to assemble a panel annually of three business managers, three superintendents, and the, basically, we would have to go and state our case as to why we feel it's necessary for us to be increasing our spending so much. That panel will then make a recommendation to the secretary as to whether or not they feel it was within the board's control. And the secretary will have the ultimate decision as to whether or not they feel it is within the board's control. If it is deemed out of the control, what happens also with Act 127 is that your tax rate increase will not exceed 5%. So it's going to be capped at 5% every year for the next five years, as long as we don't go over 10. Or if we do go over 10, they say it's out of our control. So in this scenario here, the budget that you have before you and the numbers that we just got in today, revised long-term weighted ADM, our education spending for long-term weighted ADM projected for next year is actually a decrease. So we're not anywhere near the 10% increase, so we're safe there. The property yield was the number that came out from the Tax Commissioner, projected for next year to be 9,452. So we essentially divide at 10,918 by that to come up with what our rate is just for SVU, EST. And you can see a comparison over this year's rate. That is a 7.3% reduction, so the 5% cap is even close to coming into effect here. Change from previous year, it's a nine cent decrease.
So would it make sense to decrease our revenue so that we're closer? And I know you can follow my logic here, because we have to worry about this in the next five years. Decreasing the revenue would bring that up to where?
Right. Unfortunately, I'm going to go to the next page. So we blend the rate with Mount Anthony. So at the top of page 12, I have the current version of our long-term weighted ADM. So essentially, we're looking at the two union districts by town, and we proportionately break out each of those budgets by elementary proportion by town, secondary proportion by term. That's why I have the, you know, the Mount Anthony data is on here in blue. Mount Anthony budget is currently hitting the 5% cap. So even though it shows here of an anticipated rate for them of 1.07, it's going to be capped at 1.05 as long as they don't increase their budget. Ours is not capped, so we don't have anything on that capped line. When we blend them together and compare them to this year's rates across the board, we're seeing pretty significant tax increases. And that is because of our common level of appraisal, which is one of the other pieces of paper that I handed out tonight.
So if I understand you correctly, the MAU budget is, is significantly raises the overall. So if, if we were to be team players, we would say, we don't mind elementary school, that you're spending less than you could be. And so a shout out to our elementary people. You know, I feel there's a little inequity there, I guess.
I would say yes, though yes and the MAU, part of the reason why the MAU budget is in this position is they went back to the mat several times over the last several years to to keep their budget lower. And the, the, that's coming to, that's, the repercussions of that are coming now.
And also too, for this current year, while we were budgeting, our special education projections for our out-of-district placements for MAU were significantly lower than what they had been in previous years. So when, at the MAU level, when we were looking at our assessments for special education, there's a dip this year, but then it's kind of going back to where it has been. Is, there's a dip this year, but then it's kind of going back to where it has been. Next year. So that's really one of the driving factors in the increase. There are some other things clearly going on at the MAU level. But I can tell you that. In order to, to change these tax rates. Mount Anthony, because they're already capped at that 5% rate, they would have to cut over $750,000 out of their budget to begin to move. Those numbers down. This, this board right now, any change you make to this budget is going to have an impact because you're not at that cap.
Well, I guess I'm as concerned in the years to come. That now we're starting at this negative 6% and so now next year when we're in the same position. And our, our schools need something in addition. We're going to be capped at a different spot because we started so much lower.
Yes. But. No, no, I mean, yeah, any, any, any change, any change you make is essentially going to drive those numbers up. So if you want to reduce your revenue, you're going to drive your tax rates up. And if you want to increase your expenditures anywhere, you're going to drive those numbers up.
If we don't decrease the revenue, then what will happen next year in the same spot as we're in today?
We'll probably have less offsetting revenue, which is going to drive the numbers up. But we have no idea what's going to happen with CLA either. We should have been. All the, I think all the towns are now triggered to be reappraised. But I know it's a several year process.
It's my understanding that there are so many towns that need to be reappraised that it will take a long time to get through them all.
I just happened to run into Ed Claude Feldy yesterday, who's one of the higher guys in network. And they're not even taking contracts before 27, 28. So if that means anything to anyone, I'm not an immediate concern about. You know, next year, then I'm going to get to it. I think Woodford was the last to be redone, just by happenstance, and that was for 2021.
The, the long-winded email that I sent out on Friday was basically my attempt to kind of get basically just what I said. Cross is that. MAU and for those folks, you know, at the MAU level that are in North Bennington or the Shasberry ID district. Both of those districts are capped right now. So this board is the only one that has any. Actually lever to control any of that right now without significant changes. So and Jeff, your, your question, a penny, $340,000. So we would have to reduce this by 340 to get those relatively, I mean, because they're all different because the proportions are different. But about $340,000.
And I know you've done in the past, Renee, like get that breakdown at the $100,000 levels for the taxpayers to make it simple to digest. Do we know what that looks like yet?
Yeah, it's, it's right at the bottom of that page, actually. Sorry, I didn't scroll down far enough.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So Bennington, Townall, Shasberry and Woodford.
So that's the increase we would be looking at?
But yeah, with the, with the budget that you have before you today on a $100,000.
That's the current then rate. So a $300, $300,000 home would be taxed at, you know, $4,000 effectively, plus or minus.
Yeah, just, yeah, just that. Yes, this is just the school portion.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, I rushed through that, but.
So Director, we're keen to say that figure again. To, to reduce these, these tax rates by a penny, how much would need to come out?
340.
I mean, for me, the only thing I see as there is a kind of inequity is that music position in Monument. You know, a full-time music position monument is, you know, the same as Shasberg with twice as many kids. So I don't know if that's a benefit for the kids in, I mean, it's a benefit for the kids in Monument, but how do you make it equitable for all the other students? What says Jeff doesn't come back next year and ask for a second music teacher in Shasberg?
I mean, there are other cuts that we also could look at if, if that's what the board wants to, but as you know. What, from what Renee just said, how much you have to cut to, to do a penny?
$100,000 effectively.
Yeah. So you have. Two other, you have two safety officers, because we only hired three.
Yeah.
You have that you're operating this year with three, you could make the decision, you also want to operate next year with three and we continue to share them and don't add two more.
And I just, in, in response to that, may I just ask a question? Given. I think I know the answer, but given what we're seeing right now with our student body. Does that make anybody in this room feel comfortable?
No, I mean, I, I don't as superintendent, I don't recommend it, but. You know, I, I want to tell you where there are the, where you could make cuts if we're looking purely at bottom line and not at, at, at what's the board, same with. There's an additional position for maintenance. In the, uh, for, for Holly. So those are three new positions, if you will, three positions that. You're not, you're not laying anybody off, but every cut is going to have an impact on operations.
In addition to those that are identified here, you've got six local paras that were added to the SU budget. And then four RBTs that added to the student services budget or.
Registered behavior technicians.
Autism.
Yeah. Which, so we talked, you know, the administration met and said, well, what are those? Can we not? You know, do we feel comfortable recommending that you cut? Well, as educators, we don't really feel comfortable making any recommendations for cuts. The registered behavior technician, those students are, are coming and the other. So what, how do we service them without those positions? Cause there isn't, we're seeing an increase in students with autism coming into. The lower grades. And. The. Miles Proudy, right, Renee, that program.
Yes, that's four, four of the six local paras. So there's the two all the programs, one at Benell and one at Molly. That's. Basically planned to be staffed with two and two paras. And currently we have a contract for three and three. With the professional physicians, I think we had in draft one here, we had that other. Comprehensive support opportunity come up. So we were able to move those positions into that grant. But the paras wouldn't fit in there. So that's why we kept those at the, at the SE level.
Renee, and if we didn't fund those positions, the two extra campus safety offices, those paras. The maintenance person, the reduction would be, and round numbers would be what's, so the board has. Idea that even with those type of large cuts, you're not going to see a.
You're probably in the neighborhood of that penny mark.
It would be just over $500,000. About all of those, the, the, the six pairs, the two safety officers, the maintenance.
Yeah. So not substantial reduction.
Yeah. And I mean, my. My thought is this, that the, those, those six paras, I think are essential in terms of supporting the, the types of student support that we've, that this board has talked about for. Months upon months upon months. I think the maintenance physician is essential to supporting the, the really positive changes and development that Director Anderson has envisioned. And that's, that's walked us through over months and months. You know, to my view, that those two vacant campus safety officer positions would be the ones that we could cut. And not say the $200,000, the, the savings of $200,000 is, is nothing, but it, it's not going to make the impact that. You would be looking for.
We're not at a situation where I feel we have to cut because we're at this minus 6%. However, I think what Jeff, if I understand what Jeff is. Getting to is inequity. Having a full-time position in a school with less students is, it's more of an equity piece than it is a budget piece.
If I look at. Yeah. And I look at as the teacher where the teacher in Shasberg potentially is teaching twice as many kids as the person in the monument. I'm not sure. And I just know what Shasberg is because my kid went there, but you know, I'm not sure for Benell and Molly Stark, you know, what their. Music teachers do. It just seemed like, you know, for that little kids to have a full-time teacher. I know it's beneficial for music, but. How about the other kids in the other schools?
So, so let me, let me try to, to kind of structure our conversation like this. Let, what I'd like to do right now is have a general question, conversation about the budget as a whole. And then I'm happy to drill down and look at those, those individual allocation questions. The reason, and Sandy, I think, I think I agree with you. Foundationally that this board does not necessarily need to look at cutting anything because we are under. But we are part of a larger system and our large system is, is seeing a pretty significant increase. And so. I do think we, we have a responsibility, you know, as representatives of a board and as member, member board of the SBSU. We do have a responsibility to see what we could do. What I'm saying is, I don't know that we could do anything necessarily. That, that the, the goals and the visions that, that this board either formally or informally have been pursuing. Are all supported by what is in this budget and to cut anything for this budget would be to undercut what we've been working toward.
And not just this year, but years going forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, please, I, I want to, I am not advocating you cut anything. I'm just pointing out where. There are positions that could be removed from the budget. Without impacting how we currently operate, but not necessarily going to the future. It's like. At, you know, other cuts would involve riffing personnel and that's something we want to avoid.
So let me ask the general question of the members of this board. Is there a feeling that we do need to cut from our proposed budget? Okay.
Motion to approve.
However, I do understand and appreciate Jeff's concern in the equity. And so I don't know how to address that and I don't know. Where it, where it fits in this conversation.
My, my take on it is that, you know, we have, even though true, there are two new principals to our, to our body of principals. You know, they're not in it alone. They do have mentorship, they have training. And that leaves a bunch of other really professional and seasoned staff and, and principals know what their schools need and they know what to ask for. And even though, well, and I, and I see, I think every, every building, I think we've empowered every building principal to identify the, the priorities for their building, for their student population. And.
But how much is music impact? I guess the development and growth of a child. I mean, there's, we could argue that, you know, back and forth. But, you know, does it help with, you know, the basic reading, writing, arithmetic?
I think there, there's a large school thought, Jeff, to say that yes, it does. But I also think that none of us on the board, with the exception possibly of Sandy. Yeah, has the, has the expertise in education to say what's, what those, what the, what the arts do to support the sciences, to simplify it. And I say only Sandy, maybe Sandy, maybe Sandy. I don't know that I want to go all the way, but what, what I'm saying is that I, I think there's an argument either way. And if. If. If the other building principals found that that was necessary for, to support their staff, they would have asked for it. I don't know that I necessarily feel that this board should be. That critical to that degree of the, of the individual asks.
Yeah.
That's my thought. They know their buildings better than we do.
And there's no way that one of the full-time music teachers could split their time, just out of curiosity?
That's what's happening now. So she only has a part-time person. She has a point six. She wants them to be. They're a 1.0, but the other point four is currently serving other schools. So that it, it's going to be a little bit of a challenge to backfill because they're, it's a, a little bit at Woodford and a little bit at Molly Stark.
Yep. Thank you.
Any, any further thoughts about any of this right now?
Just that concern of the equity.
Anyone else? All right. So Director Gordon, where are our next steps?
We have to warn budget. So essentially we need to have this set and then. Basically myself and our legal counsel times actually drafted the warning. I'm having another meeting to have it signed and get it over to our district clerk, no later than the last day of this month. I know we have into February, but it ends up being a weekend, I think, actually.
Calendar dictates that it's really like January 31st.
Yeah, we, we do have, you know, February 2nd, but I think Cassie would not be happy if I'm going to make her run around at, you know, three o'clock on a Friday afternoon.
We need to get wording approved by our lawyers. The length, the law has changed and what the warnings look like a little this year, simplifying it hopefully, but.
So there was action requested for tonight, and I'd like to move that we accept the budget. As it has been presented to us this evening. So can I have a second for that, please? Second, thanks, Mark. So any further discussion about everything we've been discussing tonight with the budget?
Just the one on that, on the revenue. If we were to, if we were to decrease the revenue. That would take us from a minus six and a half, 6.6 to perhaps something a little bit lower. Is that, how much would that impact the other?
So it's basically going to do the same thing in reverse. So every 340 that we take out of revenue will be a penny increase on our tax rate.
I mean, for the other districts, the MAU.
It's not going to impact them at all. It's what, what you're seeing on that blended rate. Is, it, it has their budget in it now. And as I said, because they're already capped. They would have to have over 750 to be able to make any type of reduction.
Renee, could you share that screen? Sorry, could you share that screen again with like the homestead values and the penny cost?
Sure.
Thanks.
So my concern is for next year, the year after, because we're at a negative 6.6%. But now next year, we're going to be asking our elementary schools to. Again.
And at least from my, from my stance. I think the increase that our communities are going to see with what we've been presented tonight is significant enough that I think. This year has to be the, certainly like we have to think about what the, what the coming years are going to bring. Like right now, the weight has to be to keeping this proposed budget under control. Because if we start reducing, as, as Director Gordon just said, like if we, if we start adjusting this, that the overall taxes are going to be, going to continue to creep up. And I, I think we, it's my standing, my stance that we need to keep this under control, but it's right now. And, and with the understanding that, that might be more challenging decisions in the years to come.
And we do have $800,000 that we did pull out of, of fund balance years ago. That we could potentially use as tax stabilization going forward. But just given, given the CLAs and the decrease that, that's really the, the driving factor. I mean, the spending is responsible. And it's, it's a decrease in comparison.
Well in line with what we're seeing elsewhere.
Right.
We, within. So any other questions?
When the revenue comes in and the impact rate is higher, that will. We won't see that till the year after.
Yeah, it all runs into the subsequent years fund balance, which is always a year, a predictably higher. I think that you're conservative.
Okay. Any other, so if there are no other questions, there's a motion on the floor to approve the budget as presented this evening. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye, aye. Any opposed, any extensions? Okay, motion passes. Great. So will you let it, will you let us know through the superintendent when it's ready for us to, to sign this?
Yeah. I mean, if you're going to have another meeting, I'll try to get ready so we can just have it as an agenda item.
Okay.
Oh, then you guys can just, you can come in.
Yeah, whatever.
As long as you approve it. Have it here at the front desk.
Thank you. All right. So agenda item number eight has been tabled to, to, which brings us to agenda item nine. Principal Johnson, I presume you are the principal.
But could I do an introduction? Could I do an introduction for the Principal Johnson? Cause. Could I do an introduction for the Principal Johnson? Because when I selected which principal was going to present here this evening, I specifically wanted Jeff Johnson to be here because I also wanted to publicly thank him for his service as also the principal of record at Woodford Elementary, which he is stepping down from and tonight in the consent agenda. Our early education director, Megan Mascot, was appointed to fill in for that stipended position as a principal of record at Woodford Elementary, and I want to thank Jeff publicly for his work and cooperation on that, and I think he's been very successful at it. I wish him well. I would have liked to see him continue, but I understand he's got a lot of things going. So thank you, Jeff. Before you begin your report, I just wanted to thank you.
It's your opportunity. I joined it at Woodford. I did. This was, I was working out in two schools and I think everybody here is Megan, for sure. Thank you for the invite tonight. You know, the weather's not the best. I apologize. I'm still getting used to wearing glasses. And I forgot my glasses tonight, so if I struggle reading, it's one of those. Took me fifty years in trying to read them. Need a glasses, and now I do. Um, just a couple of updates on some initiatives. We have started our benchmarking for the winter benchmarking around math, ELA, and social emotional. Staff is doing math testing, the fast bridge, our SSRSIE benchmarking, and we'll be looking at data later this or next month and seeing where our students fall and any changes we need to make. We're also school improvement, our school leadership team is working very closely with district level administration, our school level teams around our continuous improvement plan that's due this year, for the next three years. We're going to have goals similar to the SBSU plan around ELA, math, and social emotional behavior. That's going very well so far. We're on the state has been very clear about the timeline for it, and we're we're sticking to that timeline and we're up to speed with that. Classroom teachers are getting used to the new Bridges curriculum. I've heard a lot of positive comments from both classroom teachers and the students. They're really liking that new hands on piece and the games that the Bridges offers. So I wanted to pass it along to the board as well. Uh, let's see, recent events at Shasbury. I want to commend Ms. Green, our music teacher, and our band chorus for a wonderful winter concert last month. It was a lot of fun, attended, I think it was probably, it's my eleventh year there. It's only the second time, I think, we filled the entire gym into the lobby with people. It was really, it was packed. It was it was very well attended and they did a wonderful job. So thank you, Ms. Green, for that and all the hard work she puts in. Also last month, so as you, as you know, we do the PBA assistant at Shasbury, we do in other schools. And every month I have a principal prize. And this month, I haven't done this a couple of years, but this month we did tapes principal to the wall. The kids came to lunch with their PBYS tickets they earned throughout the month, and they could earn a piece of tape and add the tape to the wall and tape it to the wall. It's like stuck there for it's over an hour. It was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun. It was, we went through several rolls of tape. I want to thank the PTO, the Shasbury PTO for putting that the tape for that. It was a good time, and the kids really enjoyed that. They came down at the end of the second lunch, they watched me break through from the wall. So it's a lot of fun. So thank you for the PTO and thanks for the kids for doing that. Upcoming events, we have family dodgeball night coming up, January eighteenth against by our Shasbury PTO. And that's become a come, was annual, now it's come a couple of times a year we do that. Very popular. I'm not sure if you if you came in all scot.
Oh, yes. It's unheard for a week.
Yes, yes, it's, um, yeah, the parents have a good time, and I always hear about it next day because they're a little sore next day, but it's a lot of fun. So we'll be doing that. We can do a lot of cross country skiing at Shasbury as well. We have partnered with Prospect once again this year. We're bringing several students up to Prospect February into March on the Wednesday half days to ski free of charge. They provide all equipment. All we do is provide the kids with proper clothes and a water bottle. And we spend the afternoon up there for about four afternoons, so we're looking forward to that. And my prize for next month for the PBYS is actually skiing with me as well, so we'll be doing that at some point at the end of the month, too. And we have a family dance, again sponsored by the PTO on February ninth. The puppet people are returning in March. We've had them a couple of times. They haven't been here for a few times, but they're going to be working with every grade level over three weeks of March. They create puppets, they do shows. They do all kinds of different material. It's it's pretty intensive, but it's a lot of fun. And I want to thank Ms. Umflit for applying for a grant to get that, as well as the PTO for helping out with that as well, for paying for that. And just a couple of thank yous to finish up. I want to thank you personally for two positions. The the new campus safety officer has been a wonderful addition. Mr. Officer Banks has done a great job. He's already blended into the school, he's getting to know the kids very well, the families very well. And I think he's he slid in very easily after losing Officer Franklin. So it's it's been nice to have him. I also want to thank you for the full time assistant principal position this year. Sarah Case has been invaluable. She is, she's made my job a lot easier and more doable. She she meets with classroom teachers weekly, talks about curriculum and instruction. She also runs our EST and facilitates that and makes sure all our students are getting all the supports they need. And then finally, I want to thank all the staff for all their hard work and dedication, and they do make my job easier, they really do. So they they're a wonderful staff. As well as the Shasbury families for all their support and trusting us with their students every day. Shasbury PTO, again, they do so much for us, and we don't sell one item. We do all our fundraising with with school activities. We don't send anything home to sell, so we're pretty proud of that. And finally, thank you for all your leadership and your support over the years and your support with the budget this year as well. I want to thank you guys. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Principal Johnson?
But you didn't mention today's taper. Principal Johnson.
This Umflit wasn't today's taper?
Yes, it was.
It was, I mean, something today's taper was a wonderful artwork our students have been doing around nature. Yes, yes, it was. Yes, it was. Surprised, I didn't know that was coming.
I would have anyone who's not, anyone who's on Facebook but has not yet following Shasbury Elementary School do that because you'll get to see photos of things like Principal Johnson tape to the wall. So it's 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 a nice glimpse into the schools.
You'll swat.
So that brings us to agenda item ten, which is the superintendent's report. Superintendent Keane?
I'll jettison most of that to the next meeting that we have, but a couple of things I did want you to know that's coming up this month. We're doing NACON training for central office employees, and that's tied, also going to be tied into automatic defibrillator training for all central office employees, which given my advanced age is important for me that everyone in central office knows how to to use that. And at the same time, we'll be doing lockdown and shelter and training. You know, we we forget sometimes how many employees are in central office, so we do it in our schools on, because we have to on rotations, but so Vic Maloney will be, has reminded me of that, and that training will also happen this month in central office. I want the board be aware of one thing, it's too premature for us to know much about this, but it appears there could be a shift in federal government funding on title, which could have an impact for us. We just learned of that this week. There's a lot more, you know, information coming. It looks like statewide, the state of Vermont is going to see a reduction in title funding, which in the shifting of calculations could result result in us not being viewed as poor as we may think we are that could reduce what we receive in Title One funding, which is a significant amount of money for. So it's not this year, it's coming. We'll have time to plan and see what the impact is. But I don't want anybody to be like, whoa, you never heard anything about that. Well, it's it's, like I said, it's it's new, it's premature, but I'm letting boards know that we're beginning to walk through that quagmire to see what that what that impact is. And I hope that we, we're still going to, you didn't jettison the executive session, did you, Chris?
We did.
We did?
Yes.
Would you mind if we, if I yield my time, we just briefly have that because there is an update I want to give, let you know.
Sure. Okay, so that's, that's your time then. Any? The weather outside is very cool, just so.
I was, I was talking.
We already disposed of the chair report. We've already exposed of the FYI. We will, with a motion from the board, I will, we'll enter a new section. Thanks, we got a first, we have a second?
Nice.
Thank you, Sandy. First, second, new discussion? Okay, hearing none. Now the superintendent Keane or Director Gordon, if one of you could please make sure everyone else is out of executive.